Oops, sorry. That was pretty loud. Sorry. I call the word this regular meeting of the City Campbell City Council this Tuesday, November 19th, 2024. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bybee.
Resident.
Councilmember Fratato.
Here.
Councilmember Schizola.
Yeah.
Vice Mayor Lopez.
Here.
Mayor Landry.
I am here. I would like to invite up members of the American Diabetes Prevention and Wellness Program to lead the Pledge of Allegiance. Can you guys all please come up to the speaker here and hit the microphone to make it green?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the moral, religious stance, one nation, under God, indivisible, to liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so stay there. So now, so now, under special presentations and proclamations, we are declaring the month of November as Diabetes Awareness Month of the city. And I am pleased to present the County of Santa Clara's Diabetes Prevention and Wellness Program with a proclamation acknowledging November as Diabetes Awareness Month. So here tonight to accept the proclamation, hopefully I say your names correctly. I have Jaime Flores-Richi, the Diabetes Prevention and Wellness Program Manager, Gabriela Camero- Meros, Clinic to Communities Program Manager, Dr. Terrence Cole, Prevention Program Analyst, and Lorna Sumagara, the Health Education Associate, and Ingrid Carmelli, a student intern. And I would like to read the proclamation and then I'm gonna come down and give it to you guys. So I, as the mayor of Campbell, do proclaim, whereas the month of November is designated to promote awareness about type two diabetes and promote strategies to prevent and manage it. And whereas one in every 10 people have diabetes, a chronic condition that takes a physical and financial toll on individuals and families nationwide. And whereas National Diabetes Month gives organizations and healthcare providers the opportunity to bring education and awareness of early diagnosis and management. And whereas emphasis is placed on lifestyle changes to help prevent diabetes, such as maintaining a healthy diet and engaging in regular physical activity. And whereas the County of Santa Clara Diabetes Prevention and Wellness Program works to make sure that people with pre-diabetes and gestational diabetes have access to services and resources that respect their cultural backgrounds and supports their health and well-being. And whereas access to screening, preventative care, and wellness resources, as well as strategies to promote health equity, improvement in health policy, effective advocacy, and adequate funding are all essential for reducing the risk of type two diabetes. Now, therefore, it be resolved that I, Susan M. Landry, the mayor of the City of Campbell, do hereby proclaim November 2024 as National Diabetes Awareness Month and encourage all citizens to join in activities or educate themselves about diabetes to help prevent and manage this condition. And I will let you guys know I am diabetic, so I totally get this and understand. So I'm gonna come down and let you guys speak after this.
Thank you.
Okay. So I'd just like to thank the city council and you, Mayor Landry, again for raising awareness about diabetes. Not only, especially for November as Diabetes Awareness Month, but now that this is officially declared Diabetes Awareness Month in the City of Campbell, I think that raises awareness all year long. We, our Diabetes Prevention and Wellness Program with the County of Santa Clara Public Health Department, coordinates type two diabetes prevention work across the county. And we work, we also coordinate a collaborative of partners and individuals that are interested in, just like you, preventing type two diabetes and focusing on the pre-diabetes and gestational diabetes, which are those conditions that come before type two diabetes. So really, we're trying to stop people from progressing to type two diabetes, encourage healthy lifestyle habits. And if you would like to join our efforts, again, we do coordinate this collaborative. It's completely free to join, and we actually have a virtual meeting tomorrow that's taking place tomorrow from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. I can forward the team's invite to the city clerk. And we love to have anyone who's interested in bringing awareness and working on this important chronic disease to join our efforts. So thank you again for your time today and for the honor.
Thank you very much. And does Campbell, anybody have anything they would like to add? No? Okay, go ahead, Dan.
Well, thanks very much for being here and for speaking on this important subject. I think we all realize the importance of diabetes in its own right as a, as a disease, but also it can magnify other diseases as well and lead to other significant problems. I always learned that diabetes was a disease of the structure and function of blood vessels, because that's sort of the pathology that happens as a result of diabetes. The blood vessels are damaged and subjects to all kinds of problems from that. So the sooner people diagnose it and begin treating it, the better it is for a longer life for them. Thank you.
Thank you. So thank you guys very much for coming and for all the work you do, and we really appreciate it. Next on the agenda is communications and petitions, which there are none. Now we have oral requests. This is the portion of the meeting reserved for persons wishing to address the city council for any matter that is not on our agenda. Persons wishing to speak, there are cards up here in the front. If you would like to fill one out, you don't have to, but it would be nice. And you are limited to two minutes. The law generally prohibits the council from discussion or taking action on it. However, we could instruct staff accordingly regarding oral requests. So I do have some more requests here, and I'm gonna start with Steve Saunders.
Hello. Steve Saunders, Campbell resident. Honorable Mayor Landry, Vice Mayor Lopez, Councilmember Bybee, Otto, and Schizola. Excuse me. I've attended plenty of Campbell City Council meetings over the last eight years, and there's been one constant with this council all that time. The presence of Mayor Susan Landry. She joined a contentious, a very contentious city council eight years ago. And it, and seemed to receive kind of a rough reception, often being accused of going off into the weeds. But Susan was there to cast her vote to move forward with putting Measure O onto the November ballot in 2018, and it passed. Then, as the mayor's gavel rotated to Mayor Landry for the first time as mayor in 2020, along came COVID-19. And seemingly, everything about our city government and how it operated had to change. What a fun time to be mayor. Along the way, we have addressed, we have started major old construction problem, projects, problems too, probably, revamped several parks, and approved an updated general plan, housing element, and many other things. Also, Mayor Landry has continued to go off into the weeds over preserving our trees, questioning the practicality of options presented to the council, and having a soft spot for our canine officers. All I can say is, thank you, Mayor Landry, for eight years of service to our city. Thanks.
Oh, thank you, Steve. That was very nice of you. But you didn't answer the question, am I still in the weeds or not? You tell me later. Thank you, that was very nice of you, I appreciate that. Now I have Speaker Neil I. Bernstein.
Liebenstein.
I, I wasn't even close, so you have two minutes.
Thank you, Mayor. First, happy Thanksgiving, early Thanksgiving to everybody, and thank you for your service, Mayor Landry. Couple of things, I'm, I'm here to again ask that a resolution for a ceasefire for what's going on in Gaza be placed on the agenda. I wanted to talk about two things. First, I encourage everyone to keep gaining knowledge about this issue. And to that end, I brought a book, it's called The Lemon Tree. I found it, and I'll leave it here for anybody that wants to take it. I'm just gonna read a little bit about, from it, because it, it's the first thing I read when I wanted to get educated about this. Like many Americans, this is from the author, "Like many Americans, I grew up with one part of the history as told through the heroic birth of Israel out of the Holocaust. The mother of one of my schoolmates had lived in Anne Frank's neighborhood and had got out of Amsterdam in a harrowing journey just in time. I knew of Israel as a safe haven for the Jews. I knew nothing about the Arab side. For millions of Americans, Jew and Gentile, it was the same. They too were raised with the version of Middle Eastern history as told in Exodus, Leon the Moses' hugely influential mega bestseller. In that novel, Arabs are alternatively pathetic or malicious, or perhaps worse, and they have little real claim to their land. But as generations of historians have since documented, and as Dahlia and Bashir, the characters in this nonfiction book, recounted to me in their own words, the actual history of the two peoples' relations is far more complex, not to mention richer and more interesting. So I'll just leave this here for anybody that wants to read it. The second thing other about education is suffering. Save the Children estimates 11,300 children have died in Gaza, 3,000 under five. In comparison, 500 children have died in the Ukraine in four years, so that's been one year. And I have a son who's seven, and I, I don't spend a lot of time looking at pictures, but this is, this grabbed me as I was looking for something just to demonstrate the suffering that's going on.
Can you please, your pastime, so, thank you very much. Next, I have Anna Marie Up and Maria.
Mayor Susan Landry and esteemed council members. By now, many of our faces are familiar to you, as over the last six months, we have come before you to support a ceasefire resolution in Gaza. We are moms and dads who have raised our children in Campbell schools. We are young people who have grown up here and off to college. We are individuals who partake of the many things Campbell has to offer. We are Muslims, Jews, Christians, Buddhists, and nonreligious people from many walks of life, and we have come together, not organized in any official way, but in the most grassroots way possible, out of deep sadness over the unspeakable humanitarian crisis we have watched unfold. We have immersed ourselves in learning about the region, the conditions for people living in the West Bank and Gaza, and our country's role in supporting the destruction and loss of life. We firmly believe that for Israelis to be safe, all Palestinians too, must be safe. Today, we are at the cusp of a new administration that the far-right coalition in Israel is only too happy to have won. Trump cabinet nominees have publicly said that Israel should annex the West Bank, should reoccupy Gaza, and should reject the Palestinian right to self-determination. As citizens of Campbell, we may have little power over what happens next, but we can ask you, our local leaders, to resolve that we will not have any part in the ongoing genocide of Gazans and the bulldozing of Palestinian communities in the West Bank. Campbell can say we will not put our local dollars in companies that profit from war and human rights abuses. We are simply asking you to join us in a discussion by putting this urgent issue on the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have Julie Schneider.
Good evening. My name is Julie Schneider, and I have been a resident of Campbell for almost 10 years. Both of my kids have graduated from Campbell Unified and Campbell Union High School districts. And I'm here tonight because of what continues to happen in Gaza is, for me and for all of us, is a human rights issue. As of today, according to Al Jazeera, at least 44,000 have been killed, including 17,492 children, and over 104,000 have been injured. The devastation to Gaza is immense and inhumane. Israeli attacks have leveled over half of all homes in Gaza. Only 13% of schools are left standing. Seventeen of its 36 hospitals are partially functional. 68% of roads have been destroyed, and you can also say 7, 32% of roads are available to traverse by. Can you guys imagine 32% of roads being operable here in the Bay Area? And only to, only 32% of cropland is workable. And also, 80% of all commercial facilities are damaged. Those numbers alone are devastating and heartbreaking. And I personally cannot imagine being a citizen of Gaza, can anybody? So let us not be silent about it in our community. Let's have a conversation about it. And I humbly ask you that you put a Gaza ceasefire resolution on your agenda for the next meeting. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you. And at this time, do we have any other public speakers under open forum oral request? Do we have anybody online? No, I see none. Now I see everybody jumping up, so I'm gonna close the oral request and move on to council announcements. November is National Native American Heritage Month. It is the time to honor the history, rich culture, and vast contributions of native peoples. On October 31st, President Joe Biden proclaimed November 2024 as National Native American Heritage Month and urges Americans to celebrate November 29th, 2024, as Native American Heritage Day. Visit the Ainsley House this holiday season. The house will be decorated with the theme Holiday Heritage. Exciting events such as the Holiday Tea and Tour, photos with Santa, the Holiday Boutique await all of us. For more information, please visit campbellmuseums.com. The Campbell Community Toy Program is in need of all types of toys, books, soccer balls, and games. Toy collection bins have been placed at various locations, including Campbell City Hall, the Police Department, the Community Center, and the fire stations located on Union and Sunny Oaks. For additional information about this program, please visit campbelltoyprogram.com. The annual Downtown Campbell of Light celebration will be held on December 7th from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. Calling all ugly sweaters, dig out those hilarious, hideous sweaters and come show off your terrible fashion choices for all to enjoy. There will be face painting for kids, a petting zoo, arts and crafts, and a bounce houses. This is a free event for anybody who wishes to attend. And as a notice, City Hall offices will be closed November 28th and 29th in observance of national, not national, yes, national, Thanksgiving and holiday, and we will reopen on December 2nd. The Police Department will be open. Thank you. Our next on our agenda is the consent calendar. These items are taken as one action unless a staff member or community member or council member pulls this item from the consent calendar. Is there anybody who wishes to pull an item? Ann?
I just, excuse me, I just want to make a comment on item number seven, the ARPA allocations. And I'm not gonna pull the item, but I just want the record to reflect, I will support the resolution, but I don't support the recommendation for the unhoused, the hotel voucher program, as I stated at the council meeting when this was introduced. To me, this is a temporary program that provides no additional support. Once the 30-day hotel stay is completed and there's no wraparound services, we don't have the ability to provide those, and I just don't think that it's a good use of ARPA funds for that purpose. So I will support the resolution, but not that allocation.
Anybody else want to pull an item? Okay, seeing then, I entertain a motion for items two through eight.
I'll move the consent calendar items two through eight.
Second?
Second.
Dan, we have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Bybee.
Aye.
Councilmember Fratato.
Aye.
Councilmember Schizola.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Lopez.
Aye.
Mayor Landry.
Aye, that motion passes. Next is public hearing and introduction of ordinances, and we have none. Then the next item is new business, and it is item number nine, proposed modifications to the council policy, Section 16, park, field, and athletic facility use policy. And we have our Recreation and Community Service Director Natasha Bissell presenting.
Good evening, honorable mayor and members of council. So tonight, we brought before you council policy, Section 16, for our park, field, and athletic facility policies for some minor updates and changes. As the staff indicates, there are just a few things that we'd like to change. Just pointing out quickly, the striping of our fields, we did indicate what type of striping had to take place, and that couldn't be burned, but we never really indicated colors and things like that. And in an effort to be more accommodating and inclusive to all members of our community, we'd like to limit those to bright yellow and black. One note, too, we would like to put a note in there that it should be a bright yellow, and that wasn't included in the original report. Additionally, just some clarifying of some procedures, so that's more streamlined, all of our current field users permit through our staff. And the policy was having them go to our public works maintenance staff, so we felt that that would be a better streamlined of communication for us to work with our permit app, our permit holders. And then also some clarifying language for our non-exclusive use permits, who are people who use our track for business purposes and things like that. And then the special events that was listed in that policy, that's where people used to go. But if you recall about a year ago, we brought a special events policy to the city council for approval. Another small change in that section is the URL takes you to a landing page, and you have to click through, so we will be updating the URL to be a direct link to where that application is located. And then just some clarifying requirements in regards to what's allowed at the community center in our open spaces, and then pop-up tents, tables, and chairs all do need to be through our permitting process in a permitted space on our campus. And those are the changes we'd like to make at this time, and I'm happy to answer any questions that the council may have.
Does council have any questions for Natasha? Seeing none, I will open it to the public, and we have somebody online.
Jordan?
Hi. Hello? Hi, we're here.
Go ahead.
We just wanted to say how appreciative we are to the Recreation Department. We brought to their attention that there was some difficulties with our son and other kids who have red-green colorblindness with seeing the stripes on the soccer fields. And the Recreation Department couldn't have been more pleasurable to work with. They were fantastic, they, they really cared, and it was so uplifting for us to see that. You know, things are pretty divisive right now, and it was so encouraging for our kids to see that, that there are people out there that, that want to just make things better. And so we really appreciate your vote on this, and we really appreciate all of their work.
Thank you for your comments. Natasha's here smiling. Thank you. All right, I'll bring it back to council for either discussion or a motion. So, Joe?
I just want to make a comment how much I also appreciate staff's role, and yes, it's a really great example of how we really try to listen to the community and just do common sense fixes where we can.
All right, thank you. And now why we'll entertain a motion? Somebody?
I'll move the staff recommendation that we approve, adopt a resolution approving the proposed modifications to council policy, Section 16, park, field, and athletic facility use policy to be effective November 20th, 2024.
Second.
We have a motion and a second roll call, please.
Councilmember Bybee.
Aye.
Councilmember Fratato.
Aye.
Councilmember Schizola.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Lopez.
Aye.
Mayor Landry.
Aye, that motion passes. Next is item number 10, discuss rental protection policies, and we have our city attorney to speak first.
Yes, if I can just make a few preliminary kind of housekeeping comments. It has come to my attention that pretty much, well, that everyone on the council is either a landlord or a tenant, and that is what this topic is dealing with tonight. So in, at the outset, you all have some financial interest in what is taking place tonight and what is going to be discussed. There are, of course, applicable exceptions with regard to the tenants on the, on the council. Tenants make up about 47% of the city in Campbell, and therefore, that's a significant segment of the community under the significant segment exception of the Political Reform Act, and so you could, can go ahead and participate in the discussion tonight. With regard to the landlords on the council, it's a little more complicated. As I understand, we have two landlords, but they both only own a single unit, which they rent out as a whole, not as separate, separate rooms in any fashion. And as such, they would not be subject to rent control due to the provisions of the Costa-Hawkins Act, which exempts rental of a single solitary unit from rent control. And therefore, you would be able to participate on the discussion of rent control this evening. It gets a little more complicated when we discuss the other issue that's going, that is up for discussion tonight, which is just cause of. just cause eviction. That is something for which there probably is not an exception. And I've discussed with planning staff tonight about separating those items out so that you can first deal with the item that you can all discuss, the the potential for rent control. And then they will be presenting separately the issue of just cause eviction.
All right, and we're going to have two public speaking opportunities. So we're going to have the general, we're going to have our staff present, we're going to have the overall conversation, and then we'll talk about rent control. We'll have public speakers. And then two council members are going to recuse ourselves, and then we will have a conversation about just cause eviction. So can staff go ahead and start the presentation? And if anybody has, wants to speak under either of these topics, please fill out a speaker card and give it to Andrea. And we have Ellovisa Morello Garcia.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. Ellovisa Muriyo Garcia, the Housing Manager. And tonight we'll be discussing rental protection policies as previously mentioned. Of the purpose of this item or this discussion item, it comes back to the City Council Priority Setting Session that happened back in February for fiscal year twenty four, twenty five. At that priority setting meeting, City Council agreed to a future discussion about rental policies. This discussion today will focus on a few key topics, which include the city's existing rental protection programs. Programs and policies and goals that are contained within the city's housing element that are related to rental protections. State rent control protections under AB fourteen eighty-two. A brief discussion about Proposition thirty-three, which was on the ballot earlier this month. A quick overview of rent protection or rent control programs in neighboring cities within the county. And finally, potential options for this. So in terms of what the city has today, the city has chapter six point oh nine, which is the rental increase dispute resolution. As part of this, landlords must provide information about this ordinance to tenants before they take possession of a unit. And what this does, it really encourages landlords to kind of limit, I mean, limit rent increases to a reasonable amount to once a year, however it's it's not required, it's just kind of encourages landlords to do this. As part of this, the city also has a contract with Project Sentinel, which is a local housing nonprofit provider, and they actually run the rent mediation program on behalf of the city, which is tied to chapter six point oh nine. So they assist both tenants and landlords with any tenant landlord questions. At times, tenants will contact them if they receive a rent increase, and Project Sentinel will try to work with both parties to try to come to some sort of mediation and some sort of an agreement. However, as previously mentioned, it's not mandatory. It's just, you know, a service that's offered to try to to come to a reasonable solution. Finally, the city also has a rental fact finding committee. This was established to hear complaints from both tenants and owners regarding rent increases. However, this committee is currently inactive. In addition, the city's twenty twenty twenty-three, twenty thirty-one housing element contains a number of programs and policies that are related to rent control. There's a few listed here on the screen. There's more detail within the staff report, but those include renter protections, rights of tenants and landlords, rental dispute mediation program, and renter support. The state does have statewide rent control on the form of AB fourteen eighty-two. This was enacted in January of twenty twenty as the California Tenant Protection Act. It has a number of provisions that limits rent increases to no more than five percent per year plus CPI, but no more than ten percent in a given year. It does have a just cause eviction protection for tenants. But it does provide exemption for some units. So some of the exempted units for newer housing that was built within the past fifteen years, single-family homes, mobile homes, N R Vs, and government subsidized B M R units. However, the city did take some action on this last point on the B M R units. In August twenty twenty-four, council approved the establishment of chapter nineteen, which is the housing chapter within the municipal code. And it established B M R rent control, which the rent limits kind of mirror the AB fourteen eighty-two rent increases. However, this will not apply to, this will only apply to new B M R agreements that are executed after October of this year. So it doesn't impact B M R residents. Oh, and I did also want to mention Proposition thirty-three, which was on the ballot earlier this month, which was to expand rent control. It appeared on the ballot, as I mentioned. However, it was rejected by the voters, so that did not move forward. So as part of this, we also looked at rent control programs in other cities within Santa Clara County. San Jose has the apartment rent ordinance, and that applies to apartment buildings with three or more units before September nineteen sixty-nine. And it currently applies to about thirty-eight thousand units within the city of San Jose. It limits rent increases to like percent on a twelve period. And it also does have exemptions for single-family homes, A D U's, condos, and other types of units. Mountain View has a community stabilization of their rent act. This was established by the voters in twenty sixteen. It applies to multi-family properties with three or more units that were built before February one nineteen ninety-five. It also has limits on rent increases, and it exempts certain properties such as single-family homes, condos, and newer buildings. Excuse me. And Los Fotos has a rent ordinance, which also applies to properties with three or more units that are owned by the same landlord. Rent can only be increased once a year. If it's desired to raise the rent more than once a year, that requires tenant approval. Landlord, the landlord in this situation, something a little unique is that the landlord makes operation, maintenance, and capital improvement costs to the to the tenant. But that's done over like a certain time period. It's not typically done all at once. So with that, we'll get into some possible rental protection policies. If the city chooses to explore further. The first one would be to just maintain status quo, essentially continue to follow the state laws regarding tenant protections and rent control. So this would result in no changes. We would defer to the state laws regarding that protections and rent control, which is, you know, what we're currently doing. The second option would be to implement some tenant protections without establishing a rent control ordinance, such as like the city of San Jose's or city of Mountain View. So some ideas could be like to provide relocation payments in the case of the in the case of when a tenant has asked to move. There is currently some protection where, under AB fourteen eighty-two, where a landlord has to provide a month's rent and relocation payments, but an option could be to explore maybe providing two months rent or three months rent as a relocation payment. The second one, I wanted to provide an update, which was the renovation-related actions. There was an update that wasn't captured in the staff report. So the staff report said that under this provision, landlords were not required to provide a building permit as evidence of you know, if they're doing a substantial remodel. That has been updated. That was updated earlier this year, so I just wanted to clarify that. And finally, a right to return policy. This is also related to a a case where a renter is given an eviction notice for a substantial remodel. So previously, the tenant did not have the right to return. Under the changes now, the tenant can exercise their right to return if they notify the landlord in advance before the the work is getting started. However, it's not guaranteed that they would come back at the same rent that they're paying, so their rent could be increased when they come back. And finally, the final option would be to establish a rent control ordinance, which would be something along the lines of the city of San Jose's or the city of Mountain View approach. Under this approach, there would be restrictions that applied to multiple lay buildings built before a certain date. There would be a cap on rent increases based on a percentage of CPI to be determined. One thing about this approach is that this is the most time and labor-intensive approach out of all of them. Just as an example, the city of Mountain View's program has a dedicated rent stabilization division with a a staff of eight full-time employees. So one thing we wanted to to bring up is that as part of our adopted housing element, it does have a policy in there that the city will evaluate the creation of the housing commission by the end of next year, and also will conduct a renter survey by twenty twenty-six. So one approach could could be that the city waits until both of these complete to further study additional rental stabilization policies and programs. Next steps, if City Council does decide that they wish to move forward with some or all of these options. So some of the next steps would be to engage stakeholders, including tenants, landlords, developers, looking at the fiscal and administrative impact of implementing a program. And finally, making sure that any proposed ordinances are aligned with the objectives of the housing law. That concludes staff presentation for that portion. Take questions down for this portion. Okay.
And you're going to come back and give more presentation about the just eviction.
Very.
Right, that comes second. Okay. So does any council member have a question right now of the presentation to date? I have one question. So this AB fourteen eighty-three, the five percent a year plus CPI not to exceed ten, is that every rental property across the state, every single rental, no matter number of units?
No, there are exemptions, as I noted, like B M R units, for example, are not subject to that, single-family homes.
So when you say a single-family home, is it that you have a renter in your single-family home, or that you rent the entire single-family home?
If you say you you own a single-family home and you're renting it out.
The whole house.
Yes.
And that's exempt?
That is exempt. Okay.
All right. And you got no one else to recall? All right.
Yeah, some of these things of the details in the report weren't in the presentation, but am I allowed to ask questions about the details? Yeah. Okay, great. So I was curious, first of all, I have a few questions here before many more comments, but when it comes to the rent mediation program, how effective is that for tenants?
In terms of like the numbers.
When they have a dispute, you know, and they they're trying to use everything, you know, at their means. And so when it comes to this rent mediation program, how effective is it in helping?
I don't have the latest report from Project Sentinel. They do provide us with quarterly reports. And I know they do communicate with me on certain cases. You know, as I said, it's not a mandatory mediation in some cases, but you know, in my experience, Project Sentinel does everything that they can to to try to come up, come up with a a reasonable solution and outcome for both parties. I mean, I I can, we can get you those figures I just showed.
That would be awesome, sure. Okay, and do the landlords really participate, generally speaking, in that program as well, or is it just the tenants that are coming, they're in trouble, they they need answers, they need help? Do they sit them down at the same table with that program or not?
They they do assist landlords as well, and I personally have received calls myself from landlords asking about like the the city's ordinance and like, oh, what type of notice they need to provide. So there are landlords that, you know, that are aware of the ordinance, and they want to be proactive. So they they do assist both parties.
Okay, so it it's informative for both tenants and landlords, that's great. But what I'm asking more specifically is when there's, you know, disputes at hand, does Project Sentinel, you know, try to get them at the same table and negotiate, or is that not a part of the program?
It it depends on how how far along or how complicated the situation is, like the first the first thing that they try to do is try to come up with some sort of consolation. So they have multiple calls with the tenant and the landlord and try to come up with some sort of, you know, kind of meeting in the middle or some sort of resolution. If that, you know, that doesn't work out, then the next step would be to offer a mediation. That, however, is not mandatory for all landlords. I believe that's only if there are three units or more.
Sure.
And they would have to participate. Otherwise, it's, they would not have to participate.
That makes sense. We're definitely, this is again, something that's more directed towards not mom and pops necessarily. This is for multi-unit housing, three or more, oftentimes corporate. I I'm curious, like, when it is a corporate landlord, like, is that just as easy to get them on the phone or get them at the table? I just I assume that makes it a lot harder.
I I don't know, but I I know I interact with various property managers in the larger complexes, and that hasn't been an issue. So I imagine that Project Sentinel has, you know, has some success with the larger properties.
Okay, so the the corporate actual landlord might direct their property manager to be the one that takes the phone calls, things of that nature. That's more typical?
That's more typical, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, because the the larger properties typically have onsite property.
Sure. Okay, thank you. Uh, also, um, about the rental fact-finding committee. Now, it's my understanding that's pretty much defunct right now, is that right?
It's, yeah, it's inactive because I believe the last um. Case that was referred to that committee was in twenty eighteen, according to my research. So there there just hasn't been. You know, any um complaints that have been brought forward that would infer the. The rental fact finding committee.
How is it maybe a a lack of information, or what what's your theory on why? This hasn't been getting used to the best of its ability?
I. Don't know. Um, like I said.
Let me just jump in and help support this just a little bit. Um, I don't know that I'm a perfect answer too, but I I do think over the last several years. Cities ramped up its um working with Project Sentinel and trying to leverage that more.
Okay.
In their expertise more.
Sure.
Um, and and they really generally, uh, for the most part, do a pretty good job of coming to a. Reasonable solution, not always. Um, but that has solved a lot of the issues and we've leaned more on on them to do that, I think. Lessening because it's not mandatory for landlords with the rent dispute, uh, that they don't go that far.
Okay, and um, so. Uh, we're, it is a question, but maybe one that's too difficult to answer in the moment, but. I'm curious, I I did see somewhere in the report as well about, you know, possibly like. Replacing one program for another, strengthening things of that nature. And so would this rental fact-finding committee uh be? You know, off the table? If it hasn't been, it sounds like Project Sentinel's been taking up the burden in the meantime. And would we be strengthening Project Sentinel? And then I believe there is one other. Recommendation here uh somewhere that that you might be able to let me know about that. That's similar to, you know, uh, these mediation kind of programs and trying to make. Make things better for not only the tenant, but the landlords as well.
Yeah, I I'm just to clarify, are you referring to the housing commission that we're?
Yeah, yeah, exactly, exactly, exactly. Thank you.
Yeah, so so as I said, um, you know. We have until the end of next year to. Establish that committee, and it could be that that committee kind of takes on the. The role of the rental fact-finding committee among other. Things, right? Like, they wouldn't just be focused on rental fact-finding.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, but they would probably take on some other housing-related types of issues, but they, yeah, they could take on. That role as well.
Great, and I I did appreciate that it seemed like it was gonna come from a variety of different folks from all different strata of society, so I really appreciate that. So I'm I'm excited to learn more about that and how, you know, we can strengthen if the rental fact-finding committee is not really working for us. But uh, Project Sentinel is, and this uh other, hopefully a year from now, we'll see something really. Uh, come, you know, to free with that, and be super happy to see that. Um. So I have another question about when does the current uh rent control, the state rent control expire?
Um. Believe and. Well, you may have the answer. I believe it's twenty thirty.
Okay, thank you so much. That's longer than I remembered, actually. I thought it was only a couple more years, but twenty-three, six, seven, five, five years, so not not too terrible. But definitely, uh, something needs to be done after five years. Um. Okay, I think I have a couple more questions for you. Uh, I was curious, um. When I looked at the the study, uh, it said it was to be completed by uh like summer of twenty-eight. And so that's. What, three and a halfish years, something like that? So uh, being that it's, I mean, that's a considerably long study, I was curious. Uh, how thorough is, I'd like to know more about that and. You know, the time, how much time is being put into it, like? Things are pretty desperate for a lot of people, and so, you know. Patience is good and thorough reports are great, but I'm just curious why why this would take. A considerable amount of time to to get all the answers there.
Oh, sure, and just to clarify, you're referring to the the survey?
Yes, correct. Yeah, thank you.
The renters' support and.
Yes.
The housing element.
Mm-hmm.
Um. Yeah, so. You know, I I don't know if I have that.
Let me, let me maybe just jump in, because I think this bridges the gap a little bit to the housing element development, and I I uh will let Rob jump in if she needs to, but I I think when you develop your housing element, you have. You know, dozens, if not hundreds, of policies in there, and some of this is trying to not shoot for the moon all in the first year, so. You do kind of spread out these commitments over time, because every year the states want to see how you're making progress on those commitments. So part of that's balancing resources in our housing element. And there's other competing things in our housing element other than these things.
Sure.
That are being done. So it's really just a scheduling of those, and this was the appropriate timeframe. At the time we developed that. It's really a function of balancing all those other commitments in your housing element and where those timelines lined up. And how much you're doing this year and next year in totality.
And is it possible to speed up, especially knowing that, you know, we've got about five years until the the state. Standardly is gone, if they don't renew it, you know, where we don't even have the state rent control anymore five years from now. So is that possible to accelerate this at all?
So let me, uh, Rob, you still need to direct.
Can you guys take down the screen some consumed people at home?
Oh, yes, apologies, yes.
Uh, just to remind, uh, council members, because all my first members, it's twenty twenty-six is the renovation. I'd say most of the work done to date has been on production, uh. Increasing the supply of housing.
But it's completed in twenty-eight, am I right?
I.
Yeah, that's.
Twenty-six or twenty-eight.
It's twenty twenty-six.
It says survey to be completed by December twenty-sixth, and then study to be completed by July twenty-eighth.
I think we'd have to evaluate.
Okay.
Yeah, to the city manager's point, I mean, that right now in the housing. You look at the housing helmet, you'll see probably fifty to sixty programs in there.
I'm sure.
We do have a staff of one FTE, which is Eloisa, less around house coordinator.
Hmm.
So there there will be a bandwidth issue if you try to do too much of that.
Sure. Okay, well, maybe we can follow up on that. I'm I'm just curious if there's any way to accelerate that at all. Let me just make sure, I have many comments, but. Not sure if I have any more questions. Okay, uh, yeah, a couple more. Uh, so when it comes to the uh, the rent mediation program, uh, oh, sorry, one second. The rent control for the the new BMR units, uh, how many does that affect? Am I understanding it's? I mean, it's great, but it's limited to, what do we have, like seventy, eighty-ish homes in that category at the moment?
Uh. Yes, however, this doesn't affect. BMR units that are already built, that are in operation, so it would only impact new BMR units. With um. Agreements with the developer that are executed after October of twenty twenty-four.
Okay, great. Um. And then, so I noticed also that. Reference to the housing commission, and I was just curious, like, what power to effect change would they? They truly have, and is it just an advisory kind of capacity or? Yes, okay, thank you. Um. Can you look at more, could you give me one moment?
I. You know, we're we're still kind of working out the details about like, is it would be more of an advisory?
Okay, that makes sense.
Um, Brian Kielkrida.
And and then who needs to get past that too? That's that's the other.
I think I I just jumped in here. I mean, that's a discussion for the councils that's developed, and it's up to the council to delegate authority if you choose to.
Right.
Uh, I think uh, the concept is it is advisory to the council, um, but there may be some decision-making authority that they have with regard to. Rent dispute mediations. It depends on what what duties are given and how the council would do. A parse that out, or if the council was still in any of its authority.
Okay. And I guess my final question is, if you have maybe a ballpark figure, if. We were to pass uh some kind of rent control ordinance here. My understanding is that current state law would only affect multi-unit housing from ninety-five and before, is that okay? And so do you have an approximate number of how many units out affect right here in Campbell? If we pass such an ordinance?
So we don't have the exact number of units, but what we do have is. Um. The number of multifamily buildings.
Okay.
So uh, multifamily buildings that were built before nineteen ninety-five.
Mm-hmm.
The total is a hundred and twelve. And those that were built after nineteen ninety-five, there's seven buildings, not units, buildings.
I understand, but that's that's uh, so it would. It would affect the vast majority of of people living in multifamily. Got it. Okay, thank you. That's my last question. Thank you very much.
Sergio, you have questions?
Um. Yeah, just one. I I I know that obviously the the. And and a housing commission or any commission that we develop, that's gonna be a much later discussion. Um, but broadly speaking, are there any kind of similar bodies in the other cities that 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 you looked at?
Um. So other.
And and when I'm asking, I'm really going beyond just.
Just like a housing.
Dispute, yeah, more the housing piece, which I know.
Yeah, so city of Mountain View has a a board. Um. I believe it's like a nine-member board that, like, this is just on, right, rent stabilization issues. And but that's the only thing that they work on. They don't really, they're not a housing commission where they work on broader.
So would would this be the first, again, if we establish it along these lines, first with its kind? Dealing more broadly with housing?
The housing commission?
Yeah.
Um. I mean, there are existing housing commissions in other cities. And I believe Mountain View might have a separate housing commission, like. I'm not a hundred percent sure, but I know they do have one specifically for that stabilization.
Okay, yeah, I was trying to move beyond, but I I I get that that's a separate discussion, so I'd just love more. On that at a later time. Sure, thank you.
Any other questions, Dan?
I just have a brief comment. Um.
Questions? Doing questions.
Okay, well, I'll save my comments till later.
Okay.
Thank you, and uh, no other questions. So at this point, I'm gonna open it to the public. Uh, you have two minutes to speak, and I only have one speaker card right now. It's Darren Alami. Please come up.
Uh, good evening, council members. Uh, I'm Darren. I'm an owner of a property management company. I've lived in Campbell for over twenty years. And I'm gonna represent predominantly the mom and pop folks. Uh, not anyone that's actually uh large-scale or corporate. Uh, recently, three of my clients have contacted me about selling their properties. And a lot of this has to do with the rising costs of running rentals, and that's just basically in general. Uh. I think that any type of rent control that would cover this segment would be the straw that would break the camel's back. Uh, it's already getting to the point where. Rising maintenance is very high. Uh, the homes are aging, so a majority of these folks have purchased these, have had kids, have either upgraded or kept their older homes. And unfortunately, as things age, they also get expensive and they require deferred maintenance. Give you an idea of some of the costs that I have, uh, just with some of my clients. Roof replacements are running about twenty thousand dollars. Repiping is anywhere from ten to twenty thousand dollars per unit. Restoration services, when there's a leak, and I've got a couple that I'm working on right now with clients. Are anywhere from ten to twenty thousand dollars per unit. Uh, excuse me, that's repiping. Restoration services, that's actually taking out drywall, pulling out a bunch of other stuff is anywhere from seven to ten thousand. And I say I'm running out of time, so anyhow, the costs are very high, and I have some of the other instruments here. There's also additional burdens that a lot of the folks are incurring. A lot of folks think Proposition thirteen is the end-all, and that actually is a fixed cost. It's really not. When you take a look at your tax assessment for those that are property owners. They'll see all the bills, bonds, and assessments that are added to it. That tax on another fifty to about a hundred percent, in many cases even more than that, to the actual tax burden. So Proposition thirteen in no way really helps my mom and pop folks. Is that it?
Please enter.
Okay, so I would say instead.
Makes sense.
Instead of pitting us against them, landlords. Against the tenants, we need to take a look at some uh other low cost. Or some other types of creative ways that we can lower the cost for housing providers and tenants in collaboration, and that's what I would recommend. And I do have a list of some of the examples that have worked in other areas. I don't have time to talk about them.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you very much. I see someone coming forward. Carl, are you gonna speak? Please come up.
So uh, full disclosure, I own, but my son rents, and he's having the same problem everybody else is, from standpoint of cost of housing. Uh, in California. Uh, now, the coastal areas are more expensive. You can get a break in the central areas of uh Central Valley areas of California, so it's not widespread from standpoint of uh. High cost of housing. However, I I heard you mention that San Jose might be one of the red controls that you might consider, and I would say. That that would be one of the worst decisions you could make. In San Jose right now, we have a lot of property owners that rent them out, that are selling and getting out of the business. And a lot of those are mom and pops that are six units and less. They had purchased these properties, uh, it's a retirement plan, and uh, they feel like they're being taken over. Uh, I manage property also in both San Jose, Campbell, Los Gatos, uh, Yarroy, uh, all over the county, and uh. In the in the rent control, you have caps of of five percent plus CPI, but not to exceed the uh ten percent. If you don't take, if you don't uh use that rental increase that year, lose it. So if you are a nice landlord and you want to give them a break because they're taking care of the property. Uh, you don't give a, I've I've got tenants that I haven't raised rent in four years. Uh, but catch-up time, you can't catch up. So uh. Fourteen eighty-two is working fine. They're protected here in Campbell. You don't need to actually have that extra expense for the city. And the the uh punishment on the budget to staff that. Uh, I I really think that uh rent control in the city of Campbell is not really necessary. Uh, really, the market dictates, because even today, there are some adjustments. I have a apartment for for rent has been not. For rent for a month and a half, no takers, so he's reducing the rent. And it's not my my property to buy it that I manage, but the the market value does play into it, so there's my comment on. Against my control in the city of Campbell. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, yeah, uh, for Carl or for? For Darren, uh, we have a question for you from Sergio. Can you come back up?
It, you you don't have to come up. Good, I I.
Yeah, have him, because we want it recorded.
Go go ahead. Um, I would just appreciate if you could um email the numbers that you cited. I know you can get through all of them. I'm really interested in understanding that better.
Cost associated costs for.
Yeah, just send you the cost you knew, and you said you had others.
Okay, I can even, I can give you the sheet if that helps.
Sure, yeah, as a follow-up, but I'd appreciate it, thank you.
Okay, can you give that to Andrea, the city park? All right, last call. Is there any anyone else from the public that would like to speak on this item? Do we have anybody online? We do not. Okay, I gave you last call. I'm gonna close the public hearing and bring it back. So I want to um make clear that at this point, we're discussing the rent control portion, not to just cause eviction. Uh, so I will now go to discussion, and Dan, you seem to have some start on this?
I just had a couple of comments. Um. If and when this issue comes back to the council in the future, I would like to see some. Reports. I hate to use the word statistics, but I guess that's what I'm kind of getting at. Um, on uh Project Sentinel, since we have primarily been using them, I'd like to just sort of hear some practical examples, not right now. Um, but in the future, should this come back, to see how successful they have been. I know they're kind of like the resident. Subjects, uh, experts on this matter, and they've had a lot of experience, I suppose, with ours, but with other cities too. And it would just be good to kind of know, uh, if they've done the job that we think they should be doing. And um. If so, I I would think then that. And, um, if so, I, I would think then that. We wouldn't need to actually activate our own, uh, rental fact-finding committee. Uh, however, I would be in favor of still keeping it on the books, uh, in the future, should we have to, rather than sort of start over again. Just sort of keep it as an inactive, if in fact, we feel that Project Sentinel is doing the job and reports from. Uh, renters as well as landlords, you know, balance out or, or. Sort of, um, bear out their expertise and inability to resolve issues. That's just my comment.
Generally, I just, I don't, um, I don't support rent control, so I wouldn't go down that path. Um, I think it's, would be, um, a good starting point would be to look at our chapter six point oh nine. Um, I believe it's six oh, six point oh nine with our, um, ordinance and, um. See what's working in that, see if it needs to be updated. I think the rental fact-finding committee is, was a useful tool when it was an active, um, group. Uh, part of the problem with the rental fact-finding committee that I, um, found was that, um. Was comprised of two, two landlords and two tenants, and often a tenant would leave, and it was difficult to, uh, replace or, or recruit for that. Because, um, it, the history of our, uh, commissions, it, it's either kind of feast or famine. You have a lot of people that apply, or some people are none at all. So I think that was part of the problem that it became, came to fun. Um, but I would look at that. I, I think it was an effective tool when it was in, in place and active. So, that were my general comments.
Yeah, thank you. I, I, um, thank you to staff for the research, um, and, and the work and the bringing on this. Um, I, I really was supportive of having this dialogue, not, uh, and, and just examining our options. And, and the tools that we have, any updates, um, seeing what comes down from, from the state. My view right now is that we really have to be responsive to, uh, just the, the reality of economics. And market conditions that, that we're seeing. Um, and I'd be concerned, um, about further restrict, what, what could. De facto be restrictions on rental supply, um, at a time of economic uncertainty. And I, I, I'm really concerned about getting walloped by any tariff, tariffs that could come down and, and that we're not accounting for now. And the costs of construction. We've just passed this housing element where we're trying to increase the supply. Um, and I think the best thing we can do for the time being is to get the supply online, not lose the momentum that we have. Um, with, with the housing element. Um, I'm, I'm open to some of its discussion, but I think we have to be realistic about. Um, where we are now and, and, uh, just the reality that we're not, where we were, um, a, a year ago. And there are concerns, um, even then, and there's gonna be more, um, uncertainty with the change in administration next year. Um, I, I do think that we should think about how to consolidate, streamline, simplify, be more strategic. With what we have on, on the books. Um, I, I'm really interested in a housing commission. And as I was kind of getting at my questions, not purely, not as a, purely for replacing. Or, or even for, um, replicating the work of rental fact-finding. But just the more broadly holistically look at housing issues. I, I'm really, uh, interested in that, but again, that goes beyond. Um, this particular discussion. I, I have a little bit of a different feeling on the, on, on the rental fact-finding commission. I, I think if, um. Project Sentinel is, is working, that's really, the circumstances have changed, and I appreciate the history of, of the commission. Because I, I hadn't thought of the, the problems with recruitment. Um, I would rather personally get off the books, get it, get it more streamlined. Um, it's, it's a little awkward to have this commission on the page and have people asking about it, and well, you know, it used to do this. And, and now it doesn't. Um, I, I think just clarify and simplify to the public. I, I'm not gonna die on that hill if there's a, a desire to keep, keep it around, uh, in, in some name. But, um, I, I think, given the issues with, with getting, uh, good, good informations and clarity, both tenants and landlords. It's important to, um, be really clear. And so I think one of the best things that we could do for now is to take some of the work that was begun. And putting this report together, um, continue building on that, because obviously there's more discussions to be had. Um, and really clean up our, uh, webpage, the, the resources that we have and offer. There's some discussions in here about flyers and collaboration with Project Sentinel. Continue that work. Uh, now and just be really clear about what resources are out there, what the law is, and what, what the, the rights are. Um, in the state of California and the community. Um, and, uh, I, I, I think that would be work that would have an impact now. Um, again, you know, I think there's value to having the, the discussion if conditions change. But I, I just think this is absolutely the wrong time to go down the route of, uh, more rent control. Um, at, at this time or, or mandating that. Um, and we're really, I think, gonna have to do a lot of work to make sure that. Everything that we've done for the past few years on housing and increasing the housing supply, that that continues. Because otherwise, I'm, I'm really concerned about that, and, uh, I, I think we're just gonna have to. Um, really continue to put a lot of efforts, uh, there. But I really appreciate the, the, the work that's been done here.
Wanna go before me, Elliot?
Uh, just to respond respectfully to Vice Mayor, there's always uncertainty in the market, always. We, no one has the crystal ball. We don't know what's gonna happen, and I understand why you might say that right now. But what there is certainty in right now, and for years now, and it got a whole lot worse during the pandemic. Is people, regular folks living here in Campbell that are struggling to survive. I mean, this is a national statistic. Sixty percent of people, I say this over and over again, uh, are living paycheck to paycheck. Rents are going up. Corporations are buying more and more housing, and guess what they do? They gouge people. You know, this is, we're talking about the, the big ones. We're not talking about mom and pops. We're talking about major multi-unit housing owned by most of corporations. Mom and pops are not a part of this equation that it comes down to. Very rarely, very rarely. They're a very small segment. And, uh, so. That's why I'm saying there's a need for it right now. We can't predict the future. We can't, you know, but we can see what's going on right now. And there needs to be something done about, and I like a lot of what I've seen here, and there are less measures we can do that will help. And I want us to do all of those things. But I am begging you guys, on the behalf of all the people that come up to me, it's the number one issue. People keep approaching over and over again. It was something I didn't expect at first, but they approach me all the time. It's almost every single person I talk to when they find out I'm on council. Hey, what can you do about my rent? Oh boy, my rent's doing me, you know, almost every single person. It's crazy. And so that's why I'm saying we have to do something now. It is the right thing right now. We gotta do something about it. I wanna do pretty much all of this and more, as much as we can possibly do, tell people. And I have to comment about the, yeah, life's getting tougher for all Americans, including landlords. And that, you know, like, oh, it took me twenty thousand dollars to repair the roof of like multi-unit complex. What is that? One month's collection of rent? You know, you got, you got eight units. That's one year. Well, that wouldn't apply to you, sir. If it's just one unit, then it doesn't apply to us. Well, it would not apply to anyone. A mom and pop would not get it. That would not apply to them. What we're talking about would only apply to those massive corporate-owned housing. And quite frankly, a lot of them are also not being, um, kept up. They are, a lot of them are, they're, they're, this is pre nineteen ninety-five timeout too, and some of them are falling apart. There's something we should look into that too. I recently had somebody that approached me to talk about how their landlord of a multi-unit property was, uh, not. Doing their due diligence and keeping basic things like window repair, like there was broken windows. They're refusing to, you know, uh, help out with that, to replace the windows, and then bullying him. And making fake eviction threats. This happens all the time. So we definitely need to reestablish these commissions. We need a lot of help with this. And so I'll, I'll leave that as my comments for now, and, and, uh, if anyone else has anything to say.
All right. I, also, we absolutely appreciate, and, and, uh, I, something I always appreciate about you, Elliot, is just the passion you, you, you bring. And the commitment to, to working folks. Um, just in the spirit of also responding respectfully, I, I share the concern for, uh, making sure. The, the, the magic of Campbell is in the diversity of just folks across the economic spectrum and, and all sorts of, of communities. And, um, I want to do everything I can to keep that. What I'm concerned about is, is not that that isn't important, but that we could do something that actually makes it worse. Makes it harder for people to live at, at this time. And so I, I think we're, the way I see it, you can disagree, I think we're united on the outcome. I just want, I, I just think that there's a lot of downside if we, at this moment in time, if we, if we get it wrong. Um, and, and we can respectfully disagree on that, and you know, I can, I, 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 I can buy that. But absolutely share the commitment to just making sure the community continues to work for everyone.
And I, I, I will, let me, uh, on a more positive note, I really want to say, I mean, we've done a lot. Years before me, the council previously, I've only been here not even two years yet. But so many people have done so much, especially Rob and his whole staff have done amazing things for Campbell, really impressive. Truly things to be proud of. Um, but we've focused on building more housing. That's the obvious answer, right? More, we need more, and we're, we're doing that, right? But I feel that we're leaving out this very crucial component, which is rent control. I'm sorry, but we need it now. In fact, the, the, the word, the current state standard, it will expire. And I don't have any faith that they're gonna renew it or make it better. It'll probably just disappear like many other things, you know? So we need to, at an absolute bare minimum, but I think we can do better. Uh, to make sure that that continues here in Campbell, that we can at least continue the bare minimum standard of what the state has. Uh, made law, you know, and that should be for, you know, what the law allows for, which would be the ninety-five and previous multi-unit housing. Uh, I also feel a little competitive. Hey, Los Gatos are next door near. They got a five percent rule, you know, like, that's, it's kept out there. You know, with some conditions, whatever, but, you know, uh, uh, who has four percent? Is that Mountain View? Someone has four percent. You know, cap that four percent. I'm just saying, I feel that Campbell, uh, part of a small-town charm is, yes, we're, we're doing everything. Smart, and we're focused on doing things right, but we shouldn't be scared of, of trying something new. And the state's going to disown you. It's tariffs, you know? But, um, I'm just, my main point is that, uh, I feel we've done so much. But this is just like key to continuing. Like, if we don't see these corporate guys, they're so merciless. They don't care. They don't have any feelings. They don't live here. You know, the people making these decisions, guess what? It's not even people half the time in work. It's now AI, no joke. That has an algorithm to decide, how much can I bleed from this tenant? How much can I get out of them before they, uh, it's too much and it breaks and they have to leave? They, and, and this is the, the new reality that we're living in right now. So it's, it's disturbing to me, the trend that's going on right now. It's only gonna get worse, and that's what I'm trying to prevent. Is, is that's the crystal ball I see. Like, I know we can't see the future, but I'm seeing, you know, mass exodus of people. You know, we're gonna have a lot, we're gonna build a lot of new homes, but the average tenant right now, uh, they're looking, you know, renter. They're looking, they're in an apartment, they're looking at all these nice new buildings we're making, and a lot of them are fantastic. We got EMR, we got affordable housing. Got a lot of good stuff going on, but they're still working at them, and they're saying, oh, that's nice. You guys are building new homes that I can't afford to live in. You know, so we really, I'm just begging you guys to do something. Let's, let's do a lot of what's in this report. I'm hoping, obviously, this is just discussion right now, but I hope that we can actually take action on a lot of these things. And I, I've, I have faith that we can do something, and especially, I also urge you, please, like, you know, just talk to people that maybe, I don't know. Just random folks. I, I just keep having people approach me now, and I don't know if that's happened to you, but it's become a chronic thing with me. You know, where people keep telling us over and over again, what are you gonna do about my rent? And then they, they laugh and smile as if they're hopeless, like, oh, I'm just saying this is a joke. And it's like, no, you know what? Maybe we can do something for you, so.
Dan, do you have any? Um, so I'm a renter. Uh, I've been renting since I got divorced twenty years ago. I feel I've had very good landlords. I have not gotten more than a five percent increase. Back during COVID, I didn't get any. Um, so I have, I, I've heard our speakers. I've talked to the real estate board. Um, there is two sides to this equation, and, uh, I would like a lot more clarity. I would like a lot more statistics and a lot more numbers. So how many units are under the current state housing? The, what is it, pre nineteen ninety-five? How many units in Campbell fall under that category? How many units are single mom-pa owned? Like, the one I live in is a single-family home. Or a single person owns the home. I live in the ADU. So how many are mom-pa people? Because those are the ones that are starting to sell their rental units. They're saying I cannot afford the upkeep and the maintenance. And then having this cap on my rent. So. Who is single-family? How many are these corporate-owned, as Elliot's talking about? There are more, more in these that are buying these corporate homes. Uh, there was something in here about you had to own more than three units to fall into certain categories. So I, I need numbers, statistics. How many units are exactly going to be affected? I think that's a lot of work. Uh, right now, our goal is housing production, as Rob has stated, as we have stated in our housing element. We need to get housing built. I'm worried about our staff capacity. Mountain View has what? Eight full-time equivalent people to manage the rent control program. Now, their population is a lot more than ours, but we, with, Ellyson, our unhoused coordinator, I don't think can handle a rent control program. So I'm, I'm, I care both sides. I understand, as renter, the issues. I understand how landlords and especially the people speaking, talking about, uh, thought about the mom-pa. But really, give me a lot of statistics, a lot of numbers, figure out how many units we're actually talking about. Uh, I think our ADUs are have a deed restriction. You can't do short-term rentals. I mean, that, that, that is something I have objected to all along. If we're forcing people to build housing and then it's a short-term rental, that doesn't make sense. So like, how do all these things factor in? What do other cities do more than just Mountain View? Like in the Bay Area, outside of Santa Clara County? What are the percentages that are the rent control? Is it that you're below the five percent? Are you at four percent? Are you at newer units, older units? Uh, I, I just don't have enough information to really weigh one way or the other. Um, and I think our staff capacity is really one of our limiting factors. So I don't know that we could be accomplishing much this year. Uh, this, this is, you know, gonna be going into next year. We're gonna have a housing commission. We're gonna be having surveys. And so I just don't think the time is right, right now, to, um, talk about rent control. Yes.
Just in response to the, the staffing and time and all of that, uh, yes, Mountain View is nearly twice as big as us. I think that they also, my understanding is, it's not just for rent control. If there's a lot of other housing-related things that that staff of eight does. So, uh, I don't want you to think that that's all they do, and it took eight full-time people to do that. That's just not accurate. And I think that we could do things a lot more efficiently, and especially, you know, thanks to the people of Campbell with Measure K passing. We are gonna have additional funds now to be able to do bigger things for Campbell, help more people in Campbell. So I'm hopeful about that. We obviously had, uh, our unhoused, uh, specialist, right? Uh, and, and, and that was a grant. Maybe there's other grant opportunities to find somebody, uh, that can focus solely on. Something such as rent control and other tenant-related things. There's always other opportunities like that. I'm confident that we can find a way around it. We also have these committees that might need beefing, beefing up and things of that nature. But, um, and also, it ultimately, uh, one of the most simple things is just having a webpage with, you know, with just simplifies. Here's all the resources we have in Campbell, the county, et cetera, when it comes to tenants' rights and, and these kinds of things. Uh, there's a lot of different ways, and that's why I'm glad you're having this discussion, but we obviously need to talk about it more. But, uh, uh, yeah, I would not, I just wouldn't fear the, the staffing time. I feel that that's not exactly accurate. I'm, I'm confident that we can do things far more efficiently, and that example wouldn't apply to, to us.
Sergio.
I, I just also, I tried to touch on this, but, um, also to be clear, I wanna add to the, the, um, voices saying that, uh, I think more data would, would be good. In addition to, to what was stated, I think also really understanding the economics of what's actually going on. In the city as best we can, um, about what kind of increases we're seeing just from current market conditions. Um, I think would be really helpful for, for getting, um, uh, past anecdotes and seeing, okay, what's actually going on. Yeah, uh, at, at, at this, at this point in time. That said, I'm also aware that, um, we're asking for a lot in terms of gathering more information. And, and so I would also be open, uh, to coming back potentially with, with a scope if we don't have internal capacity. Um, for that to really get more information, uh, to, to, to better understand. I think that would go along with the, the broader work that we're doing in the area of housing. Um, I, I just, I, as we're talking about capacity, I, I also just wanna, you know, understand, we, we're asking for a lot, I think, you know. But putting this information together was a lot, and we're asking for a lot more detail that I agree would be helpful, it's, you know, I'm just aware that that's a lot of capacity.
Any more? Okay, uh, so I'll go back to kind of where I. Okay, one last time.
I would also ask, uh, I think Berkeley's a really great example of a, you know, Bay Area city with a really effective rent control policy and. That's all, that's all, I just wanna, if we're asking for more information, there are definite success stories within. The Bay Area region, and, and some recent cities as well, I can't remember off the top of my head, but. Uh, several recent cities have passed, uh, uh, rent control measures that have seemed to be effective.
And, and so that goes to what I was asking of, just not just Santa Clara County, our surrounding cities. What is the Bay Area doing? Uh, what percentages are they looking at for what time period? You know, single, mom-pa, corporate, multi-unit, I mean, I just don't have enough information. And I do appreciate what you guys have been doing to date, I mean, we are getting a great reputation as being pro-housing. I know we're looking at this designation, and I wanna keep that momentum going. Um, and I think what we're asking from definitely Sergio and I is gonna take a while for you guys to collect that information. And get what Sergio had mentioned is, if that is something that's not within our capacity, how do we get to that? Do we need to bring on a consultant? Is that, is gonna go into the budget or whatever we do next year?
And I don't think it was clear, but it will not affect single-family homes, you know, rent control measures would not affect single-family homes and.
But that's not clear yet of what it affects. It's all, it's all, it's all theoretical right now.
But the law says we can't do anything about rent control when it comes to that, single-family homes are. By state law standard, we are not allowed to do anything, right? When it comes to single-family homes and. It has to be three, three units and above, am I right? Three units and above for, and before ninety-five, am I correct in that? I just wanted to make that clear.
I, I, I'm not, I, I don't think it's limited to three units and above, I think duplexes, uh, under certain circumstances.
Okay, but definitely not single-family homes.
But not single-family ownerships, unless, I mean, there, Berkeley, uh, I believe it was Berkeley has applied. Rent control to situations where people are renting out individual rooms within their home. Uh, so, and, and that has been upheld.
But a single family, a, a single owner who owns one house that's renting the whole entire house out. There's no rent control on that unit.
Correct.
And there cannot be any rent control on that unit.
As the state law generally stands, that is correct.
I was gonna offer three things.
Okay, go ahead, Rob.
One is, uh, we've been investing a lot collaborating with the other cities in the West Valley, and we have met with Project Sentinel. Focusing on a lot of outreach collectively among the five cities and getting out in the community in the next couple of months, and really. Bolstering our Know Your Rights flyer in both Spanish and English, getting that out into the community deeper, so I just wanted to give you comfort. In the council that we're trying to get more information to renters and tenants that need it, of the resources we have. Two, um, I just lost the two, oh, two, uh, we are gonna do a very big website overhaul, uh, very soon. And working with Office Support Housing, get a lot more resources, again, we're offering to be a template for other West Valley partners that they would follow us. We have someone on staff that's very good at web design, wanna check out our webpages recently, one of them is award-winning on Climate Action. But we are overhauling the housing website to be much more, uh, available to our customers, just to get access to up-to-date resources. The last thing I was gonna offer in two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-five, on the work plan, we are gonna invest a lot more into the housing commission options. I would say with that, if you ask staff, that is a good time, either if a commission goes forward or around that time to come back to you. On this issue, I know you have a lot of, you've taken notes on the statistics you need to evaluate more. But I think that's, economy of scale, that would be a time, if you ask staff, that we can look deeper in this issue, offer more statistics options to, to, to. To move it forward on a, on a reasonable work plan without adding their staff to it.
Okay, may I have a couple comments?
Yes.
So I, I think, um. What, what, um, the information that's being requested is, is a big, um. Task for our staff to provide, and I, I think the fundamental question is, is there a majority of this council that wants rent control? Or is leaning towards rent control that would, um, and that da- data that's being asked to be presented, is that, um. Productive and in, are useful, will be useful in, in decision-making process of whether or not we are gonna go down the path of rent control? I would ask, you, you're, you're asking for, um, statistics from other cities and other counties, what's best for Campbell? Do, do we really want rent control here? Is that, um, what, what, what we're leaning towards? You know, in all respect to you, uh, Councilmember Scavola, in my six years on the council, I haven't had one person, um, ask me for rent control. I don't get emails asking for rent control, so where is the demand for this? We just, um, had a proposition on the ballot that, that failed statewide because, um, voters didn't approve the, the rent control. So I would ask, it, what is, what is the driving force for this? And are we really asking staff to go down a path when we're not actually gonna implement rent control? I, I think it's a big ask, and I think that we should be looking, we've got a lot of work, uh, uh, planned items, um, related to housing. And we should really be letting them kind of, uh, develop and, and come back with suggestions and things that might work, um, better for our community than, than rent control.
What about the other, if not rent control, there are a lot of other great things on there.
Right, I, I mean, I agree with a lot of this, the rental protections that are in place right now, I, I suggested that we look, start with our chapter, um, six point oh nine. With our, with our, uh, rental policies and see, see if that, um, needs some upgrading or, um, fine tuning. Or, uh, would better serve the community, are there things we could do? I just feel like, um, we're, we're at, it's a big ask of staff, we've got one person. Um, I, I know that this report was, was a, a lot to, to compile, and we're asking for statistics that I, I don't even know if they're, they're available. How many mom-and-pops, um, uh, rent, you know, units? And I, I, and I, I think the, the multifamily, um, apartment complexes, it's probably easier to, to define, but, or, or to. Come up with statistics, but again, it's, um, I, I, I just think we're going down a rabbit hole, but I, I'm not sure the full council is supportive of that.
And my request for this information is to make a decision. If we're not gonna discuss rent control any further, I don't know that we need all that information, but I would not feel comfortable making a decision. But one way or the other, without that information, so if like Anne was saying, there's not a lot of support right now for rent control, then that, we don't need that data. But for, for it to come back would be, you know, that, that would be the information. Um, do we, do we have, Dan, do you have any comments? Oh, okay.
No, I just felt that some basic statistics, especially those that pertain to us in terms of the success or failure of Project Sentinel. And what the general feeling was and what the numbers show, um, it, it's kind of a limited amount of statistics. But I just think we need some more information from Project Sentinel, because we do need somebody, somebody. Uh, to sort of help us in the city, um, when there are disputes among landlords and renters. Um, hopefully by bringing people together, uh, the people talk amongst themselves, you know, pluses and minuses and what the real issues are. And it works well if they're willing to negotiate and, and listen to each other. Uh, what doesn't work well was if one of the parties chooses not to come at all, then that sort of. You, you know, it cuts everything short.
Yeah, and I, I really appreciate, um, as, as always, just your perspective on, uh, the, the practicality. Um, I, I, I am pretty, I mean, we can always use better data, but at, at, at the end of it, I, you know, I'm with you. I don't think this, I, I think if there is a time to implement this within Campbell, this is definitely not the time. Um, um, that's, that's just where, where I am on the, the macroeconomics of it. Um, with, with that and with maybe trying to figure out, you know, I, I'm, I'm trying to think what pieces of this, again, the work that's been done here, how can we build on it? And move forward in other ways of what we're doing on housing. Um, I, do you think a more scaled back request, as Councilman Fratato was saying, for, uh, just the effectiveness of Project Sentinel, uh, would be appropriate? Um, at, at, at this time, as, you know, as opposed to thinking, taking it much, much broader and then maybe ultimately still coming to, to the same decision. But I would be interested in that, just to make sure that, that we're like implementing the best programs, and, and, you know, I think that's in keeping with what I was saying of. Really try to make sure we, we have a clear information, thrilled to hear about the website update that, that I know is in progress. Um, and, and just continuing down, uh, down that path.
Tonight was a discussion, uh, we're not voting on anything, do you guys have enough information to continue forward? I think we've provided you a lot of our comments. And then we're gonna go to the second part of the just eviction.
Yeah, uh, what, what I'm hearing, uh, is that we're, um, uh, are coming to conclusions this evening. But, um, there was various discussions about data and the amount of resources it takes to provide that data, and maybe a good starting point as we come forward in the future. Year, talk about and, and raise the discussions on the housing commission, as those issues come forward, we'll come forward with that as much. The additional data that we can easily put together, certainly, uh, the comments, uh, and questions about Project Sentinel and their success. Can be folded into that process somewhat seamlessly, um, I think Councilmember Bybee's correct on the, the distinguishing the names of the owners. And going through that is, is extremely burdensome, and, and that's probably not, uh, a, a good place to, to invest our resources on. But certainly, as we bring back a discussion on the housing commission, we should address the question on Project Sentinel. Uh, and we can certainly share with the council information on Berkeley, um, uh, and, and anything else that's readily available, uh, based on your comments. If that's, you understand the council, that's the way I, I heard that discussion. If, if it helps at all, I feel that getting the answer about the one hundred twelve buildings or the pre-ninety-five. That are within our community versus seven after, I feel like that alone is like, gives you a good feel of how effective the policy would be. But I, I don't wanna burden.
We'll, we'll look to see what we can ascertain readily with our systems, if it sounds easily, we'll certainly share that.
Okay.
Um, we, we quickly looked today, uh, based on that request, so, uh, we, we'll revisit that, and if we can provide that, we will do that as well.
Okay, so at this time, we are going to change the subject to just cause eviction and tenant protections. And we have, uh.
At this point, I'm gonna be recusing myself due to a potential conflict of interest.
And the same for me.
Okay, so you two will step out for a moment, and we will come get you when I'm.
Okay, so at this point, I think Elisa, you have a little more presentation to give us. Uh, I don't have a separate presentation, so I'll just say it orally, because it's really just one item. So this was under the second option, which was to implement tenant protections without establishing a rent control ordinance. So one of the options was to adopt a just cause eviction policy that extends beyond. The protections available in EP fourteen eighty-two, um, that would require tenant relocation payments. For no-fault evictions, so these are evictions where, you know, that's really at no-fault, a tenant. Um, there wasn't any, like, you know, they don't pay their rent, or they don't do any damage or anything, but it's just, they're given this. Um, eviction notice for no fault of their own, so in those situations, um. So in AB fourteen eighty-two, there is a protection for no-fault evictions if a tenant has resided in a unit. For at least twelve months, so an option could be to look at establishing, um, a protection. Similar protection, but without having the twelve-month tenancy requirement, so say a tenant has been in place for six months. They receive a no-fault eviction, then they could potentially be eligible for a relocation. Or a, I'm sorry.
A relocation payment.
A relocation payment. Okay, so do you have questions first, because then we'll open it to the public?
Yeah, uh, I, I mean, I know we've set a whole discussion about the difficulty of, of getting data, so I'm, I'm really asking, uh. Broad, big, big picture strokes, um, do we have an idea of the scale of the issue that this happens of this being a problem?
We do not have statistics on that.
So, uh, without rehashing the whole discussion, I, I think, I think that'd be really important to understand that, you know, are we talking about a multimillion-dollar program? Or, you know, tens of thousands, um, that, 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 that's a, a pretty big delta there.
And so, uh, you said you don't have a lot of data, but something that I would be interested in is. How many just cause evictions have we had in Campbell? Uh, is there any programs surrounding us of what is the payment? You know, you were saying about the twelve months, uh, then have one way to, that you get compensated versus less than twelve months. So, you know, again, I'm data-driven and inter- interested, but is that, how big a problem is it really right now? Is this a one-person thing? Is it a five-hundred-person thing?
Well, and I think some of that data is gonna be very hard to gather, because we don't get notified when there's evictions, and we're not necessarily always in that loop. So trying to get you accurate data on it's gonna be a challenge, um, not just a staffing resource, but whether it even exists and it's been compiled. So perhaps a suggestion, just hearing the previous dialogue, and I honor the council's opportunity to comment on this. Um, is if there's, um, uh, as we, as we said on the last item. Perhaps as we bring forward a discussion about the housing commission and bring forth some of those, that data, perhaps it will lead you easier into making this discussion as well. Um, I'm certainly gonna take the direction of the council on this, but just, just hearing that, my first instinct is we're probably in the same boat on this as we were on the last one. Um, and so, uh, where we can provide additional data, we will, I'm not sure that we know the number of just evictions versus unjust evictions and, and that. Um, but we could probably, uh, try, try to provide you some more broader context to that discussion through break.
And so at this point, I will reopen the public hearing, is there anybody that would like to speak on the topic of just cause eviction or tenant protections? Carl, Dan, one of you guys? Come on up, Carl.
Well, I remember the days when the eviction would cost six hundred bucks, thousands, between three thousand and six thousand dollars to get somebody out. And that's even for not paying the rent if they fight you, so just cause eviction is a problem. Uh, part of the equation of whether you keep that tenant or not, there's various reasons, boarding is, is one, it's kinda getting more common. Uh, and it's difficult to address, because, you know, you feel for the people that are there in their cottonous. Mental state of, uh, not getting rid of stuff, so, but it's a, it's a health issue. And it's a health issue not only for them, but for their neighbors within the unit, uh, so there's problems, so just cause puts a lot of pressure. Uh, on the landlords or the property managers, uh, and usually, we don't ask people to leave unless there's, they're not paying the rent. Or they're damaging the property, or there are threats to their neighbors, those are the common ones. Uh, so if you bring just cause in here and make us go through that, our job is gonna be that much more difficult.
Can I ask you a question? Um, you mentioned something about how much it costs to evict somebody.
Right.
So you said it used to be five hundred and now several thousand?
Three to six thousand.
And is that, that they're not paying the rent for a period of time, or that it takes six months?
That's, that's the attorney cost, go to court.
And how long can a person stay without paying the rent?
Well, depends, but it could be six months to a year, actually. And you're, it's lost.
Thank you.
Yeah, okay.
Does anybody else from the public would like to speak on this topic? Okay, I don't see anybody jumping up, and I will close the public hearing and bring it back to the discussion from the three of us. Want to start, Sergio?
Yeah, you, you know, again, I don't wanna rehash the whole discussion around that, I, I do think that. I, I'd like to try to find some way of understanding this piece, and I think, Brian, as you mentioned, doing some of the context of, of work of a potential housing commission. Um, would be a good one. Here's why, and I'm going to venture out on a limb here, which is always dangerous. Because as we've been saying, we don't have data on this. I, I don't get the sense that there's this wave of evictions sweeping across Campbell. And so this might be the, the perfect example of something where you have enough cases that for the people who are impacted. Could be really devastating, but it may not be a large absolute number. So I would actually be interested in exploring down the line, could there be a city program that would have, again, high impact for the people who are impacted, just have that safety net for, for, for folks who are conundrable. Circumstance as we're building up our, our housing fund for, for other activities. Again, if it's a small enough piece that, that you could break it off, and that's why it'd be, of course, dangerous to commit to that. If this is going to be a huge, otherwise unfunded liability that we're committing ourselves to. So I'd, I'd want to have some, some assurance, but I know we may not have perfect numbers. But I'd be interested in seeing if, if there is a city program that could potentially fill, fill in the, the gaps here for those really limited cases, not where you have abuse or where it's going to drag things out, but the really specific cases that, that we're talking about would sound like they would be pretty rare and, and in its own category. So I just, I'd want to understand that, that better if it wouldn't be overly burdensome, but potentially higher impact. I'm sorry, I should have been more specific, for relocation assistance specifically. And we can say, you know, we might say within the city of Campbell or, or, you know, what, other limits that, that you might have. I think that's something that could potentially be.
So first, I'd just like to make the comment that, you know, the vast majority of tenants are good. You know, that these forced evictions are pretty rare, actually. You know, I mean, people are people, most people are good people, most people want to stay in their homes, so these don't happen all that often. So when a cost is passed on to, and it happened to my own parents, their mom and pops, they only own one house they have tenants in. But they did have tenants that were hoarders, ironically, it's funny that he said that because they were hoarders. And they were actually damaging the house, you know, so, you know, they went through the whole process, it did cost them some money. It did cost them, I think, a few thousand dollars, just like you said. But that was a rarity, it is a rarity in the end, so I just want to say that, that we shouldn't be thinking that this would be, you know, a mass scale kind of thing. Most tenants are good tenants and they want to stay in their homes and they take care of their homes. So I also wanted to mention, I personally experienced about five or six years ago, one of my neighbors in the complex next door. There was renovations going on in this complex, but the tenants were still living there. They were trying to attempt to make the renovations while the tenants lived there. All kinds of terrible things were happening where like they're doing roof work and, you know, dust and debris falling down onto them, literally. And all, you know, all their possessions, everything, son with asthma having, you know, problems. And nothing happened, in fact, she got evicted after the fact and it was a really sad thing. She, she protested to who she could, I, I don't know who was it, um, like I said, it was five or six years ago, right? Next door neighbor of mine and, you know, she lost that battle and she showed up, she paid her rent every, every month. And this person, this, this landlord just clearly wanted to get as many of those tenants out. And then bump up, oh, I got nicely remodeled units here, I'm going to bump the rates up significantly. So that's a personal experience I've had also, and this is just to be, I don't mean to be gory. But this stuff happens right next door in Las Vegas, right next to my, my. My daughter's mother's house, or my house apartment, another apartment complex down the street. The sheriff came for an eviction, that the man in question who was being evicted, he shot him to death. And that's because you didn't have anywhere to go. I was surprised I didn't see it on the news, no articles written, but this is a thing happening. So if you haven't experienced it in your own life, if you haven't been hearing people come up to you talking about a desperate situation you're in. I'm just telling you some more personal experiences. I'm sorry, apparently the guy in council has all these experiences with different people and all these stories and all the things coming to me. But this is a very real thing and so, you know, I'll be ultimately disappointed if we don't do too much on this. So we'll, we'll see where this goes, but, but when it comes to this specific matter, I think we should also, again, do as much as we possibly can. And again, the cost does go, I heard a comment earlier, it sounded like, maybe I misinterpreted this, but that there'd be costs in the city. But my understanding is that the cost would go to the landlord when it comes to this, like the, oh, I'm going to give you a few months rent. I gotta have you go, but that's correct, am I right? The cost is not going to go to the city.
Until we have to enforce our ordinance and then that burden.
But it, it wouldn't be the same kind of cost, am I right?
The cost that Carl was talking about is the cost to the, the owner
Correct.
of what it took to get the person out or, or they're not paying rent. So that was not the cost of the city, but if we have a program, then we're now absorbing the cost of the program.
But the, I'm specifically talking about the restitution, like, you know, oh, hey, sorry, you have to move because I'm doing remodeling. But here's one to three months of what your rent was, so you can help relocate, that kind of thing. That's, that's the burden of the landlord, not, not the city at that point, but enforcement, I understand that.
And that we, ours would be.
But that, that's significantly less of a cost, right?
Well, I, I want to be clear about what I was speaking to, just so there's no confusion. I mean, there's, there's no program here because this is, this is hypothetical and there'd be further work done. What I'm talking about is not, i- is, is the potential of having city funding for relocation assistance. That'd be different from what you're describing, it's not to say we couldn't discuss that, that's just not what I was talking about as what I believe would be potentially effective.
Yeah, I just want to make it clear, I, that kind of thing, I would expect it to be the burden of the landlord, not the city. And I understand that we might have to do some enforcement, but that'd be significantly less expenditure than, you know, what the landlord would have to go to, am I right?
I don't know that I could say that necessarily, they, they are different costs though.
Well, I'm going to want to know what those costs are.
Give us data. So. Do you guys have enough information of what we shared with you tonight? Do you need anything else from us?
I'll say broadly what we're hearing and have notes on the feedback, but in terms of timing, consistent with what the city manager said. And in time that we come back and invest in the Housing Commission, revisit this and then bring back certain, some of the statistics we can on supporting, looking further at this, the options, with ones where we have an ordinance, the landlord acquired relocation assistance. And there are some programs out there, counting others, where cities can offer either paying last month's rent or some relocation assistance. There's, there's no, there's those types of programs that exist.
Okay, and what was this section or the ordinance nine, what did Dan say? The one she wants reviewed, 6.09. Okay, all right, so you have everything that you, you got us from us. Okay, so at this point, I'm going to ask Dan and Ann to return to the room. Okay, so I have a request from Sergio to make a closing comment about anything other than just cause eviction.
Yeah, I'll, I'll keep it broad, I'll, I'll keep it brief. I, I know these are not easy discussions, I, I do appreciate, as Councilman Scizolo said, there's been a lot of I, I think really leading work in the city of Campbell to just do bright fire residents and everyone who calls this community home to move forward on housing and I think really be leaders as an example for the rest of the region. And I, I, I just think we have to be committed to that, that big picture, making sure we're serving the whole community. I do think there are effective win-win solutions that we can get to, again, you know, again, not easy discussions. But I'm hopeful that we'll continue moving forward on that front and not just the issues tonight, but overall with what we're doing with, with housing. And I really appreciate whatever was brought to this discussion.
Thank you, and yes, thank you to staff also for all the work that you guys have been doing. Like I said, we're getting a great reputation to be very pro-housing. I love bragging about how our housing element got proved early and it was, it's very nice to see how many units that we're seeing coming in. So just continue up with the good work and we'll follow up on this topic, I won't, but the council will. Okay, so we're done with that item, we have no unfinished business, so we'll go to council committee reports. Dan, would you like to start?
Yeah, I attended the Cities Association Board Meeting and Legislative Action Committee last week. And we had two presentations at the board meeting, one was Silicon Valley Clean Energy. They gave us an update, which was very informative. And the second presentation was from, actually from Santa Clara County Public Health. And they talked about a concern with synthetic cannabis that is circulating in the county. And they're reaching out to the various cities and the police departments because apparently this product is available in, in stores and students are accessing it. And it's packaged with, in the form of candy wrappers and Dorito-type chips and things. And the students get access to it and it can be very harmful, so they're reaching out to the communities. I, they, they did mention that there were some locations in Campbell that they identified. And they're supposed to be following up with the various jurisdictions to, to let them know that. I don't know whether it's hit your doorstep, but it, it was a concern and they, and they talked about it, so I just thought I'd pass that on.
The day after our last council meeting, I, I was elected Chair of the Valley Transportation Authority. And so really looking forward to that, it's, it's the first time in about 12 years or so that the West Valley has, has held that seat and I think the first time in 20 years that, that Campbell has been represented in board leadership. So really excited for, for, for that, it's, it's been full steam ahead. And just one update I'll share is that, I don't know how many meetings we've, we've, we've had since, since that happened. But one of, one of the highlights was a workshop that we took, really diving deep into the numbers for Bart's Silicon Valley Project. Getting the cost savings down to where we need to be. And we're, we're really taking a look at just the best options, ideas that, that we can. While also trying to be right by the, the, the homes and businesses that would, would be impacted and, and trying to keep that in mind. Making sure that, that we're serving the region, but really exciting work and, and there's also plenty of other work for the West Valley and Peninsula that I'll be excited to, to share more about as that proceeds.
Just wanted to express my appreciation to the city. When we had our Veterans Day commemoration, the weather was somewhat inclement and cold. And we were able to bring the event here into the council chamber, which was much more comfortable with the band playing in the lobby. And so I appreciate the staff's cooperation, the recreation staff was very versatile in terms of helping us adapt this facility for that event and it was nicely attended, so thank you all.
Yep, and so starting with Silicon Valley Clean Energy. So the biggest thing that happened last time is we adopted long-term clean energy targets. Really impressive to, you know, see how far ahead we're looking, you know, like the chart went into the 2030s even, you know. And we're, you know, we're, other, other organizations, when it comes to energy, they, they struggle to try and meet the state standards. SVC is doing really well, we're not only meeting, we're often exceeding the targets, so we're looking good into the future. I just attended the Ainsley House and Campbell Historic Museum Foundation meeting, got a couple new board members. So back when I was, I was like three, four, it's now 10 members, so nice and strong, going strong. The, ah, the holiday teas are famous holiday teas at the Ainsley House, they're sold out, so that's great news. Also, you should look up on the campbellmuseums.com website, there are plenty of opportunities to visit the Ainsley House during this beautiful holiday season. As you can see, it's already starting to get very beautifully decorated, the interior, if you've never been inside it, it's absolutely wonderful. Different groups take different rooms and they decorate them in different themes, so it's always, you know, it's different every year. So that's fun, even if you've been there before, come back again, check out the different decorations and their open house. So they're open going on through December 22nd, Thursday through Sunday. And then the open house in the evening time is going to be on the evenings of the 19th and the 22nd. And just so you're aware, everyone, the Ainsley House will be closed January and February. Oh, and, and during that time, I'm sure they'll be gearing up for the 100-year anniversary, so 2025, that's going to be 100 years. So there should be some really fun events in the, coming in for the Ainsley House.
Thank you, I didn't have any of my committee meetings, but I will say the Memorial Day Veterans Event was very well-attended. It was so nice to see the shift at the last minute to run in here, set up chairs. We had what, 30 band members out in the hallway, we honored Anna Eschew after the Veterans Event. She told me it was the best proclamation she had ever received and several council members had added statements that were on there. And it was really nice to see her kind of as her send-off from us here. I attended the INE Burger, which INE apparently is Parsi for this, because I couldn't figure out what an INE Burger was. So it's this burger and they had a whole bunch of scenarios of how to use it. Gary happened to be there for lunch that day when we were there celebrating with the chamber. I attended the Veterans Dinner, as did some of us, on Sunday night, it was a very nice event. And I think they raised some pretty good money out of the event. And then this afternoon, it was an honor to be at the groundbreaking of the new Stout House. It's one of the Ainsley Buildings, it's next to Blue Line Pizza, there's a parking lot running parallel to Blue Line. It's the old brick house there, there's a big area in the back that has nothing. They're going to have an outdoor beer garden, they're going to have strings of light. And I thought what was the coolest part, it is going to be family-oriented. And the great-grandmother of Alan Hicks had a playhouse that resembled the house that's left over where eBay is. So this house is coming back as part of a play feature in the Stout Garden, representing what was the Ainsley's bigger house. But it's a scaled-down version, I think that's going to be really cool. And then we had a wonderful commissioner dinner last night, Andrea did a great job, we had a great caterer. I think it was very well-received, I got a lot of compliments of how nice it was. It was great to be in one big room together that we could all mingle and so I do really appreciate Andrea and Christine, the work that you did. So unless anybody has any other comments, I'll adjourn the meeting.